Girls, that is what I want right there.
We can.
Why?
Oh.
Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
You're right. We've been growing since nineteen fifty-nine and we ain't going nowhere. Blue Cross Blue Shield. Hey, we got a thousand dollar sign on bones. We can get you home Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Come join us today right there in Troy, Alabama. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Drivers, I have three questions. One, in twenty twenty-four, did you make good money? Did you get home like you like? Did your company treat you like family? If you have answered no to these questions, let me ask you this. Why not try a company that does all that? Why not try Wiley Sanders Truck Lines? That's right, Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, been in business since nineteen fifty-nine. Come join a family today that treats you. Have you ever dreamed of working for a trucking company that had Blue Cross, Blue Shield, had four one K with a four percent match? If so, then you ought to call Wiley Sanders Truck Line, the trucking company that makes dreams come true.
The Truck Smart app has even more ways to make life on the road stress-free. As always, Ultra One members earn points, gears, and ultra credits whenever they fuel up at a TA, Petro, or TA Express location. And now convenient and fast fueling is just a click away with the Pump Smart feature. To use Pump Smart, simply click the Pump Smart icon in the app. Just like always, Truck Smart helps you find a TA, Petro, or TA Express location near you. And once you've selected your location, you can choose which fleet card you'd like to use for payment. Truck Smart users start by entering and storing their fleet card payment methods, either in the setup section of the app or during the Pump Smart process. Next, you can save time with Pump Smart by entering information like your vehicle and trailer IDs. If you're using a new payment card for the first time, you must first enter this information one time at the pump. After that, you can edit this information right in the app whenever you need to. Truck Smart stores this information for you. Next, you'll receive a code. You'll receive this code right in the app. Simply enter this code every time at the pump and fill her up. Once you're finished at the pump, your receipt is logged in your transaction history and stored right in the app. It's fast and convenient. Pump Smart is just another way that the Truck Smart app from Travel Centers of America is making life on the road a little easier. At Travel Centers of America, we know that life on the road can present challenges. That's why we created the Truck Smart app. The Truck Smart app makes life on the road stress-free by putting all of the services and amenities at TA, Petro, and TA Express right at your fingertips. And for Ultra One members, the app makes the perks of membership even easier to access. The Truck Smart app helps you get what you want when you want it. For starters, you can search Truck Smart to find which services are available at the TA, Petro, and TA Express locations that are around the corner or on your route. And you can reserve and pay for reserved parking or a shower right in the app. The app's simple and secure sign-in gives you the ability to securely link your credit card. Need a specific service for your truck or specialty fuel? Maybe you have a taste for a specific restaurant, or maybe you need a pet area or a place to workout. The Truck Smart app finds the things that make life easier while you're on the road. If you aren't already, you can become an Ultra One member right from the Truck Smart app. Quickly and easily create a loyalty account to start earning Ultra One points, ultra credits, and more. With Truck Smart, Ultra One members can manage their account. And the app delivers real-time updates on things like point balances and your monthly gear level. Truck Smart even gives Ultra One members an up-to-date tracker of the gallons of fuel needed to reach the next year so they can earn more points. Need an oil change or other truck maintenance? No problem. Ultra One members can also get in the TA truck service queue right in the Truck Smart app. Get real-time traffic and weather alerts, and with Truck Smart, help is there when you need it. You can connect with Road Squad Emergency Breakdown Service from the app in just one click. We've updated the app with a new intuitive design that will help you easily find what you're looking for. And we're always adding features to help make your time on the road stress-free. With the Truck Smart app, you can arrive at any TA, Petro, or TA Express location with confidence, knowing your time is well spent. Life on the road just got a lot easier with the Truck Smart app from Travel Centers of America.
Wiley Sanders Truck Line, Troy, Alabama.
Girls, that is what I want right there.
We can.
Why?
Because we grow like Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
You're right. We've been growing since nineteen fifty-nine and we ain't going nowhere. Blue Cross Blue Shield. Hey, we got a thousand dollar sign on bones. We can get you home Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Come join us today right there in Troy, Alabama. Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
You think you know Travel Centers of America's Ultra One program? But do you know today's Ultra One? Ultra One now gives you more, more points, more rewards, more options. Gear up to get more by signing up for Ultra One today. Ultra One is the loyalty program that saves you time and money just for fueling at TA, Petro, and TA Express locations. Take advantage of flexible reward points and reward credits that you can redeem on showers, meals, parking, and more. And it's free to be an Ultra One member. Ultra One's gears program rewards you with points when you fuel. The more you fuel, the more points you earn. Ultra One members start off in first gear and receive one point per fuel gallon. Move through each gear to receive up to four times points per gallon. The more you fuel this month, the higher your gear level next month. Not only do you get points when you fuel, for Phillips of sixty gallons of fuel or more, you earn a reward credit. In first, second, and third gears, reward credits can be redeemed for a shower. In fourth and max gears, you choose how to spend your own.
To another additional truck talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Truly, truly, I'm excited this morning. Pike County, I want to tell you something. Boy, I say anything else. I got a guest here this morning, and this guest is here. I'm gonna let him introduce him and his organization, organization all himself. But I want to say this. What a deed it is to give something and for somebody to receive something. You know, the Bible says there's more happiness in giving than it is in receiving. And when I was a young boy, I, I, I couldn't understand that. But the older I get and I get chance to help someone and I see how happy they is, it, it does. It's, it's a happiness in it. But anyway, I will work for the day, and I read it this morning on the radio. And it's, it's, it's spitting for these times that we're living in. Comes from Revelation one and eight. Study Bible says, "I am the omega, the alpha, and the omega," says Jehovah God, "the one who, and who was, and who is coming, the Almighty." King James Version comes back and say, "I am Alpha and Omega, the beginning and the ending," says the Lord, "which is, and which was, and which is to come, the Almighty." You know, when you think about that, don't worry about nothing. God is still in charge. But, uh, we're not gonna prolong the time this morning. But if I was to tell y'all that somebody is gonna pull up to the service station there on the Cola Three Nuts, Bo Cobb's Service Station, y'all know what I'm talking about, right across from Trojan Detail. And buy gas free for some people. All they gotta do is just pull in there, get them some gas, and then go across the street to Trojan Detail and get them a piece of barbecue. Would you believe that, Steve? But it's true. It's true. We'll be right back to talk about that after this break.
Have you ever dreamed of working for a trucking company that had Blue Cross, Blue Shield, had four one K with a four percent match? If so, then you ought to call Wiley Sanders Truck Line, the trucking company that makes dreams come true. I had a dream last night, girl.
What dream?
I dreamed I was driving a truck.
Like that?
Yes, like that.
That's not a dream. That's driving a truck from Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
That's right. I'm driving a truck, the company that makes dreams come true. Wiley Sanders Truck Line, Troy, Alabama. Come drive for the best today.
Wiley Sanders Truck Line, Troy, Alabama.
Girls, that is what I want right there.
We can.
Why?
Because we grow like Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
You're right. We've been growing since nineteen fifty-nine and we ain't going nowhere. Blue Cross Blue Shield. Hey, we got a thousand dollar sign on bones. We can get you home Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Come join us today right there in Troy, Alabama. Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
Good to have you back on Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders just once again. I want to tell y'all, Matt has always tell me when he come see me, always say four one K, Blue Cross Blue Shield. He let me know that he knows it's real. Man, uh, what your, what your fraternity is doing this week is just so amazing. But guess what I found out? Uh, Saturday when I was at the radio station, I was telling, uh, Louis D. Yeah, I was telling him about it. And he said, man, that's not the first time them guys have done that. I've been sleeping. He was telling me, he said, man, them guys are consistent. He said, you guys are consistent about the stuff y'all do. So tell them about the neighborhood.
Well, I'm a member of Omega Psi Phi, Fraternity Incorporated. Uh, we believe in mentor giving back to the community. Uh, we, uh, our charter principles, manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift. And what I mean by that, you know, you have young men out here that don't have a father figure or something like that mentor, you know, try to keep them out of trouble, things of that nature. And we teach scholarship. We also like to have a little education, you know what I mean by scholarship? So, uh, basically what we do is trying to give back to the community. Church started at home, so we, it's, uh, our chapter is here in Troy, Alabama. So we believe in giving back to the community. So what we are doing next weekend is, uh, we giving out gas. Uh, twenty, twenty-five dollars each car that pull up to the, uh, pump. It should start around between eleven thirty and twelve. Uh, we just gonna be over there by Trojan Detail, you know, Mr. Cobbish, uh, gas station.
Yeah, Bo Cobbish, I know.
We gonna, we gonna get over there and give out some gas. We try to give back. We, uh, you know, that's what we try to do, you know, give back to the community, uh, so that somebody cares, you know, about.
You know, I wish that I had a, yeah, this little earlier. I would ask the big KD to come down, but, and we've been booked so far in advance and like. But I do want to say this. I do want to say this. And sometimes it's gotta be that person that, that is, is coming on out and saying, ladies and gentlemen, if you can buy your own gas, what I mean by that, if you could afford your own gas, please don't give it to me. This is for people, am I right? You stop me if I roll up. This is for people that need some assistance. Okay, so y'all see me lying, the Roxy. It's me too. You see me, I'm the Roxy. No, I see so many people do things like you guys are doing it. And by me, let me say this. I tell people, I have one event a year. I'm involved in a lot of events, but I have one a year. That's my mindset. But I see so many times, and the reason I see this, because I'm involved in so many events, where the privileges are misused. I mean, this simple as that. And I don't like that. I don't like the injustice. Our father, he didn't like injustice. Bible says he liked justice, justice, and law and love. That's what he believes in. And I try to live as close to him as I can, and that's something that, that, that he never did. He never looked down on the poor, and everybody said a week would always be a month. So I don't want to tell people. Man, if you don't need the gas, you won't do anything. And I want to tell you today. I said this this morning on the radio. Some things are so good that you want to be a part of. And I'm just gonna try my hand at this. But I got some names I'm gonna go to calling tomorrow. I'll let them leave out today. But tomorrow, I'm gonna go to call us some names, because I got some friends that I know are able to help you guys. Y'all ain't asked them for no help. So don't worry about that. I'm asking for awesome help. Uh, and I'm gonna start off, you gotta start with yourself, and I'm gonna start off. And I got the manager of Trojan Detail here right now. Can we get him, can we buy two of them out of gas too?
We can buy two of them out of gas.
Okay. I just wanted to do that and, uh, uh, Pop Town, Jeff Knox, uh, Brandon Brundage. Canees. I'm gonna watch them guys. I don't, I don't, I'm not even worried about it. I'm not even worried about it. I know they gonna do it. But I'm gonna ask them guys, sometimes when you, when people see you, they get on, and I can't think of this guy today. But when we washed, we washed some, uh, cars at the car wash for the Pike County cheerleaders. And they both had a special on some gas, and the girls walked out. There were some people come by and gave donations and stuff. And Steve will tell you, I say this every Monday. Pike County, all you gotta do is ask. Oh, you guys are gonna be fine. So tell me, how, how old is your chapter? How old is your?
Well, our chapter here, uh, was started in two thousand seventeen, but Omega Psi Phi been around since nineteen eleven.
Eighteen eleven.
Been around since nineteen eleven. We also do, we giving our gas. We also do a scholarship program every year. Uh, we do some, try to raise the money, uh, when we selling stuff, where we turn around and give it to, uh, two scholarships away per year to schoolhouse to help some kid also go to college.
Okay.
So that's what basically what we try to do. We try to raise money, try to give back, like I say, to the community.
Well, man, how do you, how do you, how does a child qualify for the scholarship?
Well, we really make them do like an essay.
Uh huh.
And they get the essay and they get, and somebody go over and read it, whoever do the, they say they get picked and they pick the child. Which is trying to do a girl and a boy.
Okay. Uh, Darina, I asked you because the Calibers, they do it. And a young man, I can't think of his name now, but you know, I met him when I was in third with my knee. And, uh, I saw him at the Calibers and I said, uh, dude, I did this, announced the scholarship. I said, man, how you got a scholarship? He said, I built it up for it, man. I did the paperwork. That's the main thing. You gotta do the paperwork.
Paperwork.
Gotta do the paperwork.
But it's, it's, there's a lot of programs out there and, and people.
People don't buy them.
Buy them and, or try to know about them. But, you know, we try to put out there, when we do, you thought your, a little essay and write, they read it and they get pass it out.
I spoke to one of your, uh, members Friday. Matter of fact, he was on the boat with you at that time. I did not know he was a part of you guys, but I've been knowing him for a long time, and he's educated. He teaches him. And I heard him say something. He probably wasn't paying no attention because that's his dog. But he said, uh, he said, I wasn't at the meet. He said, I couldn't be at the meet because it's time for me to do some tests. I got nine boys. I'm trying to make sure they get it.
Oh, yeah, he, uh, see, but he's educator, and you talking about, he also is a rabbin, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, pray it loud. Pray it loud. Yeah, so, uh, he believe in, also helping the community, do a lot with the church itself. So, yeah, he been, uh, for a long time.
And I, I have to stretch this when I say this to the young people of the world today. Get some form. I just say everybody had to go to college. Get some form of education. I ain't drove a truck in about ten years. The last couple of months I've been driving, I thank God that I can read. I was headed for that car calm and something, but it slipped right into it. You can read it. It tells you how to work it. And, and I just thought about that. There was a time where you could just drive a truck and you could do all your stuff on the phone. Ain't no more phone stuff. As you say, he wasn't number, and, uh, thank God for my wife too, because she could have been here for now. I won't leave her out of this. But man, uh, I lo-, I love what you guys are doing, and I want y'all to know that, that Matt and Ash to come on this show. I found this out, and I want him to come on here. I wish I had him to come on a week prior because actually Sunday when this re-airs, you'll be in, uh, did this, but we gonna, we gonna see if we pull a Steve Leggs. I'll see if we can get it aired again this week. It's just a great thing, man. And, and, and it sounds, you know, some of those things that sounds too good to be true? This is just too good to be true, but it's true. And, and I, and I pray, I pray to God that, 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 that somebody gets in that line, that they see what a blessing this is. Maybe they have a son or a daughter that can, come and be a part of what you guys do. See, we, we is older than, I know you ain't quite got one bit yet, but you, you had a leader in your camp, your father. Your father, I don't want to bring you down, but your father was an educated man, and he loved to see people learn and do. And, and when you care off that, when you put that off, people catch over that. They pick it up. They pick it up. And, uh, I am hoping and praying that somebody hears this, somebody see all of this Saturday. Maybe show me a boy in the car and say, how can I be a part of this? What can I do? And I know you guys are getting directed. I know sometimes y'all deal with kids that's just having a little trouble. Y'all try to get them to turn around.
Well, we do, we also do, like I say, mentor, uh, uh, myself, one of, uh, my fraternity brothers. They, uh, got a group of guys and they went down to my grandma's county, took them in the jail, let them experience. Took them in the courtroom also, let them see what goes on when you ain't doing right. Uh, decision-making is very critical. I always tell you about behavior.
Behavior, behavior.
Tough thing. But I think just showing them, uh, showing somebody care, also showing them the, the bad side. This is what happens when you do this. And that's what we try to teach.
I left my phone in the truck, but I knew you was coming on the show, so I did a little investigation. I called the Pike County jail. There are seventy being out of there, seven. Thirty ladies. Pike County. I bet you not a one went to bed last night thinking and wished they were somewhere else. I don't think many down there was glad they was down there. And, and I did that number. I got that number because I just wanted to, to just for somebody to hear what's going on. Seventy being.
It's a lot of meaning.
Seventy black being down there. They just, down there too, but I was just, that's a high, high number.
We were having them.
Well, small town like this. And the Bible talks about the wide road and the narrow road. The narrow road, it says that many are not finding it. The reason they not finding it, your favorite word, your behavior. You got to have a certain behavior on this narrow road. This wide road, you could do anything, but it leads to destruction. And I don't want nobody telling me what time I got to go to bed. And when I gotta get up, and what time I got to eat. I just don't want that.
Now, that's what happen when you put yourself in bad situation. My dad say, you know, you make good decisions, good thing happen. You make bad decisions, bad thing happen. You ain't got to work on neither one of them because both of them promised to you.
Both promised to you. Yeah, that, that's pretty good. Good decision, good thing now, bad decision, bad thing now. You ain't got to work on neither one of them. They both promised.
They both promised to you.
I sit here sometime and I think I have, I have all kind of gifts though. But when I mostly get excited, when I have kids on, like the cheerleaders and their Saturday page or, or something like this, something that's gonna help, something that I know, uh, I love going to the, uh, district center. Something that I know is gonna help somebody, gonna help somebody. It's, what y'all doing is sad. It's gonna help somebody. Hey, I tell people all the time, I've always worked, I ain't always made good decisions with my mother. And I said a lot of times to it all, but you know what? I didn't get those free things because I wasn't doing what I need to be doing with it. So I needed to walk or do whatever. But, uh, it's a lot of grandmothers, this is what I'm hoping, this is what I said on the radio. But I know people go tell you, because they tell you everything I do. I told them on the radio that I hope somebody get this gas like some grandmothers. That, 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 that's got, got this cheer. I'm gonna go say it, got this cheer dropped off on. And they got to raise them. I hope some of them grandmothers. And we got some fathers out there that we do a different time, just doing the best they can with their kids. I hope they get something like that. I just hope people get this gas that need it.
And it is, I, I believe also what you said too, that's some good men out there that try hard.
Try hard.
Try hard. They make enough. They may need some help. If you need some help, I want you there.
I want you there.
I want you there.
I want you there. You know me a better.
They made enough gas enough to take them for the week to school.
That's right. Might be enough to take them to school. And, and, and you know, anytime you're doing good, you may come there just to get the gas. But I know the guys from your fraternity, that's a lot of different guys. They may come up on your job and do. You may come up on some good advice or some kind of program. This is out, this is what kills me. People call me, it's W I O A. Yeah, that's what, it's the W I O A program. People call me and they ask me about schools. The first time I ask them, you ready to local curriculum? Right here in Troy, Alabama, right across the road over there. They have that program. They're not gonna call you and tell you they got the program. You got to call them. Now, what they do is, uh, I don't remember, we get it high, the high is really dumb. I think sometimes they have them, sometimes they don't. It's the government relates, so we did not. But I know this for a fact, you can put your name on the list and when it comes in here, call you. Because I know a guy that did it. This guy come out there with us. Went through that program, got his CDM. Came up. Went through six-week training program. I love stories like this. Got off the six-week program, got on him a truck. And the day coming there, filled out the paperwork to be a trainer. And you ask them in the room, somebody trained you after six months, please train one. Didn't tell him that, but I had told somebody else. He come to me. He said, well, boss, I got for six months. Let me go and help somebody. Man, I almost cried. I almost cried. The guy just was ready. He went through, he did it Friday, filled out the program. You talking about a guy that was living at home? Boy, he got it with a crisis. Come on, you right, boy. You can come up without doing the wrong thing. You can get you a job and just.
You guys speak consistently.
That's where it is. You took the word for the thing. You got to stay consistent. You can't work two or three weeks, quit. And you cannot, ladies and gentlemen, I, I, I've got a problem with this, and I usually don't receive it. Don't tell a man you coming and don't show. I love to tell this story. Years ago, I was going on a trip with Mr. Sanders. And when I got there, some things that make me feel a little funny, so I went back to my car. But in the process, I fell asleep. Well, when my passengers got ready to go, I was nowhere to be found. And they was looking for me. And I thank God for the man I worked for, Wiley Sanders. They told, he told, said Jeff said he was gonna be here. Y'all backtrack from my house, yes. Because he said he was gonna be here. He's coming. By that time I had woke up, was coming across the door. So be the type of person, if you say you gonna do something, if something else happen, it'll be somebody that'll stand up and say, hey, somehow, he don't do this. He don't do this. They know on Monday morning, I'm gonna be there either seven or ten p.m. because I got a class coming. Every Monday, they know I'm gonna be there that time, because that's, I got a class coming. I want to be the first one there to hear me through them. I feel like I need to be the first one there, turn the lights on. You know.
But it seem like when you set a standard with, how you speaking, then when, if you don't show, then somebody gonna check on you. It ain't your, it ain't your behavior. It ain't what you do.
It's your behavior. That word goes over again, ain't it?
Behavior. So they, let me go check on, because it ain't, something ain't right.
That's right.
Because your word stand for something.
It stands for something. Stands for, but that's if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. You'll fall for anything. And I just, I admire you guys for standing up and not to hold you. But I admire you guys for getting out of your community and it happens, and it happens. And, uh, y'all gonna have a good time over there at Trojan Detail. Like I said, Trojan Detail is gonna buy some gas. And I'm gonna tell you ladies, if you know me this week, uh, be looking for me, ask you to come over and buy some gas. You should just, all you guys are doing it. And two or three of my friends, they get two or three of their friends. And I'm telling how much gas we can. Two or three of my friends, they get two or three of their friends, and I'm telling how much gas we can buy.
Tell them, they'll help somebody out.
Yeah, they'll tell how much gas we can buy, I think it's just a, it's just a good thing. It's just a good thing, it's just a good thing, I wanna be a part of it. So many times. We wanna be a part of the wrong thing. Wanna be a part of the wrong thing. Pick out what you being a part of, pick out who you hang around, look at them and what they doing. They ain't doing nothing, nine times out of ten, you ain't gonna do nothing.
That's the thing with me, I gotta poke, he said, we gonna get in some trouble, getting into some good trouble.
Good trouble, good trouble, Louis, yeah, you just got good trouble. I, I saw the big, uh. Right up the head on him, I thought that was pretty good, you know, his nephew drives for. Very dependent. Just like you talking about, very, he takes his child. He picks his child up from school. And he goes to Atlanta and back. Just like Clark. I see him sometime going across the yard. And he coaches ball. He coaches ball too. He coaches ball, you spread the ball, do you, man, you spread the ball, do you? What about on Doug, Doug, Doug Swag, he plays some good football, that's the safety director, he does. Oh, Doug Swag, he plays some ball, I, I'm gonna, uh. I'm gonna try to get safety to go up against somebody, some team in Troy, and raise a little money. I'm, I'm, I'm telling, like you tell me when you be going to trouble, my boys, I'm good for one quarter, you tell them you good for a half.
You're good for a half, now y'all got to do the rest yourself.
I'm good for one quarter.
Yeah, you gotta pass it on.
I'm good for one quarter, I'll make a quarter.
I'll make a quarter.
I'll make a quarter. Well, Matt good to have you, man, say hello to your family, always tell everybody, say hello to their family before they leave.
Hello, family, hello, everybody. Be blessed.
We're praying. We're praying, we're gonna pray all week, this here just be the biggest it's ever been, I know it's not your first time doing it, but we're gonna pray. All week, the people help you guys, and that gas line be run out to the end of the road and, oh. Hey, man, just good success, and uh, y'all keep doing what you do, there's some people out there to see you and know what you're doing. We'll be right back with Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
Have you ever dreamed of working for a trucking company that had Blue Cross, Blue Shield, had 401K with a 4% match? If so, then you ought to call Wiley Sanders Truck Line, the trucking company that makes dreams come true.
I had a dream last night, girl.
What dream?
I dreamed I was driving a truck.
Like that?
Yes, like that.
That's not a dream, that's driving a truck on Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
That's right, just driving a truck, the company that makes dreams come true, Wiley Sanders Truck Line, Troy, Alabama, come drive for the best today.
Wiley Sanders Truck Line, Troy, Alabama.
Girls, that is what I want right there.
We can.
Why?
Because we grow like Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
You're right, we've been growing since nineteen fifty-nine, and we ain't going nowhere, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, hey, we got a thousand dollar sign on bones. We can get you home, Wiley Sanders Truck Line, come join us today, right there in Troy, Alabama, Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Drivers, I have three questions. One, in twenty twenty-four, did you make good money? Did you get home like you like? Did your company treat you like family? If you have answered no to these questions, let me ask you this. Why not try a company that does all that? Why not try Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, that's right, Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, been in business since nineteen fifty-nine. Come join a family today that treats you.
Have you ever dreamed of working for a trucking company that had Blue Cross, Blue Shield, had 401K with a 4% match? If so, then you ought to call Wiley Sanders Truck Line, the trucking company that makes dreams come true.
The Truck Smart app has even more ways to make life on the road stress-free. As always, Ultra One members earn points, gears, and Ultra credits whenever they fuel up at a TA, Petro, or TA Express location. And now, convenient and fast fueling is just a click away with the Pump Smart feature. To use Pump Smart, simply click the Pump Smart icon in the app. Just like always, Truck Smart helps you find a TA, Petro, or TA Express location near you. And once you've selected your location, you can choose which fleet card you'd like to use for payment. Truck Smart users start by entering and storing their fleet card payment methods, either in the setup section of the app or during the Pump Smart process. Next, you can save time with Pump Smart by entering information like your vehicle and trailer IDs. If you're using a new payment card for the first time, you must first enter this information one time at the pump. After that, you can edit this information right in the app whenever you need to. Truck Smart stores this information for you. Next, you'll receive a code. You'll receive this code right in the app. Simply enter this code every time at the pump and fill her up. Once you're finished at the pump, your receipt is logged in your transaction history and stored right in the app. It's fast and convenient. Pump Smart is just another way that the Truck Smart app from Travel Centers of America is making life on the road a little easier. At Travel Centers of America, we know that life on the road can present challenges. That's why we created the Truck Smart app. The Truck Smart app makes life on the road stress-free by putting all of the services and amenities at TA, Petro, and TA Express right at your fingertips. And for Ultra One members, the app makes the perks of membership even easier to access. The Truck Smart app helps you get what you want when you want it. For starters, you can search Truck Smart to find which services are available at the TA, Petro, and TA Express locations that are around the corner or on your route. And you can reserve and pay for reserved parking or a shower right in the app. The app's simple and secure sign-in gives you the ability to securely link your credit card. Need a specific service for your truck or specialty fuel? Maybe you have a taste for a specific restaurant, or maybe you need a pet area or a place to workout. The Truck Smart app finds the things that make life easier while you're on the road. If you aren't already, you can become an Ultra One member right from the Truck Smart app. Quickly and easily create a loyalty account to start earning Ultra One points, Ultra credits, and more. With Truck Smart, Ultra One members can manage their account. And the app delivers real-time updates on things like point balances and your monthly gear level. Truck Smart even gives Ultra One members an up-to-date tracker of the gallons of fuel needed to reach the next gear, so they can earn more points. Need an oil change or other truck maintenance? No problem, Ultra One members can also get in the TA Truck Service queue right in the Truck Smart app. Get real-time traffic and weather alerts, and with Truck Smart, help is there when you need it. You can connect with Road Squad Emergency Breakdown Service from the app in just one click. We've updated the app with a new intuitive design that will help you easily find what you're looking for. And we're always adding features to help make your time on the road stress-free. With the Truck Smart app, you can arrive at any TA, Petro, or TA Express location with confidence, knowing your time is well spent. Life on the road just got a lot easier with the Truck Smart app from Travel Centers of America.
Wiley Sanders Truck Line, Troy, Alabama.
Girls, that is what I want right there.
We can.
Why?
Because we grow like Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
You're right, we've been growing since nineteen fifty-nine, and we ain't going nowhere, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, hey, we got a thousand dollar sign on bones. We can get you home, Wiley Sanders Truck Line, come join us today, right there in Troy, Alabama, Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
You think you know Travel Centers of America's Ultra One program, but do you know today's Ultra One? Ultra One now gives you more, more points, more rewards, more options. Gear up to get more by signing up for Ultra One today. Ultra One is the loyalty program that saves you time and money just for fueling at TA, Petro, and TA Express locations. Take advantage of flexible reward points and reward credits that you can redeem on showers, meals, parking, and more. And it's free to be an Ultra One member. Ultra One's gears program rewards you with points when you fuel. The more you fuel, the more points you earn. Ultra One members start off in first gear and receive one point per fuel gallon. Move through each gear to receive up to four times points per gallon. The more you fuel this month, the higher your gear level next month. Not only do you get points when you fuel. For fill-ups of sixty gallons of fuel or more, you earn a reward credit. In first, second, and third gears, reward credits can be redeemed for a shower. In fourth and max gears, you choose how to spend your Ultra Credits, a shower, a meal, or reserved parking spot at any TA, Petro, or TA Express. The more you fuel, the more you get. You can redeem points in our well-stocked convenience stores, delicious full-serve or quick-serve restaurants, and our state-of-the-art TA Truck Service locations, for reserved parking and so much more. And don't forget, the more you fuel this month, the more you'll earn next month. Sign up, gear up, and get more with today's Ultra One program.
Well, we're back with Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Line, I tell you guys, we're gonna do. Uh. I gotta figure out when it is, we're going to. One of the first barbershops in Troy. I'm trying to get to my calendar here. But anyway, we're going to. We're going to. We're going to. Right down at Raymond's, golly, I'm getting old, Raymond's Barbershop, we're going to Raymond's Barbershop. On. The. We're gonna pull a drive of the month there. It's gonna be the last Friday. In, I mean, the first, the last Monday in March. Is when we gonna go down there. And uh, I'm very excited about that, very excited about it, saw Raymond at the bank and he was telling me, man, I got the oldest business. He said, I got the oldest business in uh, Troy, Alabama, where you need to come see me. So we promised him that we'd come. And uh. We're going, we're going. Can't get my calendar to pull up. The, the whole month, but I know it'll be the last Monday in March, I do know that, last Monday in March, and we gonna pull a drive of the month there. So if you go to Raymond's to get your hair cut, we want you to come by. I'm gonna have some Wiley Sanders koozies, maybe a couple of hats and uh, we'll have a good time. Ceasefire is gonna be there with us, of course, we gonna be there, you know, ceasefire is gonna be there. And uh. Another thing I need to talk about this morning, the drivers lounge. First of all, we wanna. Say thank you to the ladies over there, but. We, we've been had a, I won't say confusion, but. What was they classified as sharp workers, well, but if you notice, every time we have a cookie, they're down in the shop working and serving plates. I'm gonna go right, get right on to the point, drivers, you can now put the cleanup crew in the suggestion box. In other words, if you see somebody cleaning up crew, you know how you suggest for the sharp mechanics, wash rag, dino and all, or you can do it with the cleanup crew now. And I'm excited about that because those girls do a great job. Uh, I go over there every Thursday. Every Thursday I go over there, well, I go more than that, but every Thursday I know I'm gonna go there to show people around. And it's always clean in there. Always very clean in there. Got a few more announcements, I wanna make sure I get all my announcements out of the way. Uh. Oh, I got a good one. I think it's May seventeenth, I didn't bring none of my flowers today. I didn't, but. Having a big show down at the Calibers, whole truck show. Down at the Calibers. Harry Thompson, Hunter Ball, and a couple of guys, but anyway, want, want some information about it, see them. Uh, you can see me, I'll find out what I can find out about it, but it's gonna be a show, they say break it, rusty, shiny, high up it is, break it. I think it's thirty dollars to get your vehicle in, in. And uh, that'll be tight, now you know. If it's at the Calibers. I always say this, anything that's going on at the Calibers is gonna be good. It's gonna be good. And I saw a friend from the Calibers at the bank Friday. Monday, and uh, me and he was talking, he said, he looking forward to seeing me down there soon. Calibers is just. Pike County Cal, Pike County Calibers Association is just a great place. Great for the county, it's just a great place, anytime they have it, so I get excited. This is always family oriented. Bring the little kids down, they gonna see trucks they never seen. It's like we had rodeos, uh, when they had auctions, it's just, a lot of good stuff goes on down there, so. My hat goes off to them, those, Matt was here talking about they give scholarships, well, Pike County Calibers, they give scholarships too. Uh, Pike County, we're blessed. Let me just say that, we're blessed, uh, we're blessed to have Wiley Sanders Truck Line. KW, KW Containers, KW Plastic, Sanders Lecum, Sanders Furlongs, we, we're blessed to have all this in our county. And, and let me apologize for my, my boss that wanted my silence since I did. Wow, you wouldn't believe it. Old Hall said he been struggling, but I'm hanging in there, you know me, I ain't gonna give up, but. All these things we got going on in this county. Not just say positivity. Positivity. Things that can help people. Well, I wanna be a part of something that can help people. I, I, I go back and sit again, this gas deal. This is just. Wow. That's just nice, can you imagine? People just pull up, get gas. I wanna call more, I wanna call more and just thank him for. For, for being a part of that, just, just letting his station be a part of that, it's such a great deal. I wonder could we get him if we tried it this morning? Wonder could we get on Bo on the phone?
The number you have dialed has not been recognized.
Well. Says the number's not been recognized. I know that number that bank is all too much money.
The number you have dialed has not been recognized.
Well, I guess I don't.
Please try again.
I'm like giving love. There we go.
Good morning, taking charge.
Yes, baby, could I speak to Bo Hobbit, please?
Yes, one moment.
Okay. See what Bo got, see what. Well. 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 Hello, this is Bo, I am in the office today, please leave a message and I'll return your call as soon as possible, thank you. Well, we got it down some, let's see, I'll try to call him back in here, but that is just so good, Bo is always use his service station to, to help the community. And I wanna tell you. I want everybody to do this, they can. If you're able to buy some gas for someone that's less fortunate, like I say, I, I do one a bill a year, I've involved a lot of them, but I do one a year. But I'm going to. I'm going to really. Reach out to some people I know and ask them to buy some gas Saturday, I just. I feel like this is so good, and then I feel like we really, really, really need to support them. We need to support them. And if we support them, they'll support us. Anytime I always support. People. And they know. Uh. Most, most people know that you're supporting them, it just gives them encouragement, it gives them encouragement, gives them encouragement. And I was looking for my phone because I wanna make sure that I give you guys the right date. On the drive of the book, because. date on the Drive of the Month because it'll be somewhat different and I'm excited about it. I'm excited. So... Well, I said the last Monday, but it's 31 days of this. We're gonna do it, uh, March, let's see where... Yeah. We're gonna do it March 24th. March 24th, we're gonna be at Raymond's Barbershop. And I think that's when we gonna pull the Drive of the Month. It's gonna be a big thing. We gonna have a good time. Want to congratulate the people for the Drive of the Month, for this month. Sharpe and Glory, Canis Hall, thank you. Guys, the things we do at Sanders, when I say guys, our drivers, ladies, and me, we pray that we're doing things that you guys and ladies could see that we love all drive. And when I say that, I say that from my heart. You're not just a number if you drive a truck for Wiley Sanders Truck Line. You're a coworker, you're an individual, it's very loved by this company. And I'm not ashamed to say it, I'll just say it like that. If you fail off, if you drive a truck for Wiley Sanders Truck Line, you're very loved by this company. From the owner all down, especially the owner. I've had several conversations with him, and guys, I'll tell you something, he loves his drivers. And you should see that about what we do around you. Equipment, dispatches that we put in place, our leader, Frank Sparkle, open door policy. Go in there anytime you want for the talk. I, I, I don't know many companies that you can go talk to the president of the company. And uh, and I guarantee you, I guarantee you, you will. God never changes. God come in day one, said I'm gonna do this, 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 and I'm gonna be like this, this, and then he's never varied from, never varied from what he move. He all the time. But anyway, we're gonna take a short break and we're gonna come back and wrap up the show for this month. Drivers, I have three questions. One, in 2024, did you make good money? Did you get home like you liked? Did your company treat you like family? If you have answered no to these questions, let me ask you this. Why not try a company that does all that? Why not try Wiley Sanders Truck Lines? That's right. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, been in business since 1959. Come join a family today that treats you.
Have you ever dreamed of working for a trucking company that had Blue Cross, Blue Shield, had 401K with a 4% match? If so, then you ought to call Wiley Sanders Truck Line, the trucking company that makes dreams come true.
The Truck Smart app has even more ways to make life on the road stress-free. As always, Ultra One members earn points, gears, and Ultra credits whenever they fuel up at a TA, Petro, or TA Express location. And now, convenient and fast fueling is just a...
Have you ever dreamed of working for a trucking company that had Blue Cross, Blue Shield, had 401K with a 4% match? If so, then you ought to call Wiley Sanders Truck Line, the trucking company that makes dreams come true.
I had a dream last night, girl.
What a dream.
I dreamed I was driving a truck.
Like that?
Yeah, it's like that.
That's not a dream. That's driving a truck for Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
That's right. I'm driving a truck, the company that makes dreams come true. Wiley Sanders Truck Line, Troy, Alabama. Come drive for the best today.
Wiley Sanders Truck Line, Troy, Alabama.
Girls, that is what I want right there.
We can.
Why?
Because we grow like Wiley Sanders Truck Line.
You're right. We've been growing since 1959 and we ain't going nowhere. Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Hey, we got a thousand dollar sign on bones. We can get you home, Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Come join us today, right there in Troy, Alabama. Wiley Sanders Truck Line. Drivers, I have three questions. One, in 2024, did you make good money? Did you get home like you liked? Did your company treat you like family? If you have answered no to these questions, let me ask you this. Why not try a company that does all that? Why not try Wiley Sanders Truck Lines? That's right. Wiley Sanders Truck Lines, been in business since 1959. Come join a family today that treats you.
Have you ever dreamed of working for a trucking company that had Blue Cross, Blue Shield, had 401K with a 4% match? If so, then you ought to call Wiley Sanders Truck Line, the trucking company that makes dreams come true.
The Truck Smart app has even more ways to make life on the road stress-free. As always, Ultra One members earn points, gears, and Ultra credits whenever they fuel up at a TA, Petro, or TA Express location. And now, convenient and fast fueling is just a click away with the Pump Smart feature. To use Pump Smart, simply click the Pump Smart icon in the app. Just like always, Truck Smart helps you find a TA, Petro, or TA Express location near you. And once you've selected your location, you can choose which fleet card you'd like to use for payment. Truck Smart users...
Okay, we're back with Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Line. I'm desperate to get Bo Carvage. On the phone. Cannot get...
Good morning, taking charge.
Yes, can I speak to Bo Carvage, please?
One moment.
Come on, Bo. Let me see Bo out there telling you, heard his voice spell on Truck Talk.
This is Bo.
Hey, Bo, good morning to you. First thing I want to tell you, you live, so don't, don't talk to me like you usually do. Don't holler, what up, Halls? How you this boy?
I'm doing well. How about you, sir?
I'm doing good. Bo, I wanna call you to tell you, I just wanna take my hat off to you. I talked to the Omega guys and they was telling me the fraternity that's gonna be buying gas at your service station Saturday. And, and I just wanna tell you, man, that's, that's good of you to lie stuff like that.
Yeah, especially what I didn't know about it.
Oh my God. All right. Well, they gonna buy, they gonna be giving away, whatever they gonna be giving away. They gonna be buying gas for people. They gonna be buying $25 for gas for people Saturday, starting about 11 o'clock. Man, I think that is just great. Maybe your manager knows about it and you just don't know about it.
That's probably the case.
That's probably the case. I, I, let me see, can I guess this? You're not gonna stop them, are you?
I am not.
Well, I was just bragging on you a little bit. See, you do stuff and don't even know it. I was bragging on you when we did the cheerleaders, when we did them at your service station and you gave them discount and, and the girls pumped gas and sold, washed cars, and we swapped back and forth. And uh, I just wanna thank you for being in the community of Pike County and always being willing to help when you can.
Yes, sir, always willing to help. And uh, yeah, the cheerleaders, they raised, uh, I think that was a record-breaking fundraiser that day. Worked out well for everyone.
Yes, yes. Well, these guys are, Apple, they just trying to do stuff to help people. They give out a couple of scholarships and, you know, with organizations like them and also the Pike County, Pike County Calibers Association, you know, they having a big old truck show down there and, you know, that's gonna take gas, maybe they'll come out here and get some. I'm just glad to see that we live in a county that pulls together with one another.
Yes, sir. Makes a good place to live.
Yeah, we can call a man on his job and he don't get mad with you, he just talking to you anyway. Well, Bo, thank you, man. Have a great day. Uh, keep everything going smoothly up there at Troy Bank and Trust. Thank you for taking my call.
Yes, sir. Just remember, we're the only bank you'll ever need.
You the only bank we ever need. Well, ain't nobody else gonna take because I owe you too much. Bye.
Have a good day, y'all.
All right. You know, that's what you call good, great leadership. When a guy, I tell you, while you talking to him about something, he go, "You the only bank you ever need." That's pretty cool. Oh, what I've ever needed for a long time, I've been making it, Troy Bank and Trust for a long time. Like I said, probably won't nobody else have me, so I'm just gonna stay there. I like going to the place they know me by name. You know, you gonna go in the disbanking, that, like, you gotta have ID. I go in Troy Bank and Trust, I ain't gotta have nothing but my face. I get what I need and it does, so. Uh, guys, ladies, and gentlemen, this show is about over. I've had a great time. Apologize for my silence, but I want you to do me one favor this week. One favor. Two favors. I'm sorry, two favors. Say something nice to someone and do something nice for someone. This has been Truck Talk with Wiley Sanders Truck Lines. Goodbye, goodbye, goodbye. Goodbye, goodbye, goodbye. Goodbye, goodbye, goodbye.
Start by entering and storing their fleet card payment methods either in the setup section of the app or during the Pump Smart process. Next, you can save time with Pump Smart by entering information like your vehicle and trailer IDs. If you're using a new payment card for the first time, you must first enter this information one time at the pump. After that, you can edit this information right in the app whenever you need to. Truck Smart stores this information for you. Next, you'll receive a code. You'll receive this code right in the app. Simply enter this code every...